Can we go, Chris?
Just leave this.
Can we go, Chris? Because there's a break in between.
And then, do I read about the design by Emily Harley?
Okay. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to begin the board meeting. I thought I was going to have to do like in church and tell you to talk to your neighbor, but we didn't. Our order of business this evening is the school board meeting of March 12th, 2019 is now called to order. The time is 6:03. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentation portion of the meeting. The agenda can also be found at the district's website, www.lee schools dot net. Navigate to the leadership tab and then choose School Board. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision, which is to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of this evening's board meeting, we have been enjoying the Trafalgar Recorder Consort. That's a lot to say, okay? Too many S's. The Trafalgar Recorder Consort from Trafalgar Elementary School, under the direction of Janice Holycross. Let's give her a hand. The Recorder Consort is made up of second, okay, when I say your grade, raise your hand. Second graders, third graders, fourth graders, and fifth graders. These students rehearse every week after school and perform throughout the community. Okay, thank you very much. Those of you that are standing, there are seats in the front. So you can come and join us to sit if you'd like. And now we will resume the meeting. This evening's student representative for, from the school, from, sorry, the school board's Student Advisory Committee is their chairman, Reese Hall. Reese is a junior in the IB program at Fort Myers High School with a, ready for this, 5.08 weighted GPA. Reese serves as the Secretary of Youth in Government, Secretary of the Florida Law Honor Society, the Treasurer of the Academy of Law. She was an attorney at Teen Court. She is a member of the Mock Trial Team, winning the 2019 county competition and placing third at the circuit competition. She is a member of the Executive Board of Model UN, winning seven awards at the Model UN Conference, a member of her school's National Honor Society, and Mu Alpha Theta, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sure they have a sign. What do you do when you meet another Mu? Do you do anything?
Don't think so.
Okay.
We should.
You guys need a motion or a movement or something.
Probably.
She's involved in young life and the worship team at her church, as well as a varsity cheerleader. Reese plans to attend a top university and major in international relations before attending law school. Let's welcome Reese.
Can I also...
Yes.
...remind the audience that she's also a member of the school board's Student Advisory Committee?
How did we leave that one out? Yes. Awesome. Okay. I am going, everybody don't gasp, I'm going off script for a second. I have a statement that I would like to make. Children are first, and efficient professional workforce is the only way to do what is best for children. That statement is more than a mantra or cliche to everyone on this stage. Our job, our way of work moving forward, is to accomplish our goal for and by children. We will be transparent, and in my mind, that means letting you know what we know. We will continue to work hard, everyone up here works very hard. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders, the community, local, state, national legislators, and it is not okay to speak negatively about anyone at any time. We will agree to our way of work, and I will be bringing this to our next voting meeting to ask the rest of the members to agree and for any additions going forward. I felt I needed to say that before we started this evening. Thank you. Our agenda for this evening is the invocation, the pledge, one acknowledgement, four recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under executive services, three items under academic services, one of which is good cause. And Dr. Atkins, would you please provide an explanation for the good cause item?
Yes, Madam Chair. Approval of the Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Scholarship Program grant proposal. Florida statutes requires that this bonus be paid by April 1st of each year. The grant package was allocated to the district. We received that on Friday, March 1st, so due to the short turnaround timeline and apply with statutory requirements, I'm bringing this item good cause this evening.
Okay. As presiding officer, I find that there is good cause to accept this item on the agenda, as well as two items under business services, one item under human resources, and nine under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
It's moved.
Ms. Jordan, second. Ms. Fisher, thank you. It's moved by Ms. Jordan, second by Ms. Fisher. Please record your vote. And I'm sorry, this is not up there. Susan, do you have it?
It's seven zero.
Okay. Thank you. Seven zero, the motion carries. And I dropped my pen.
Okay. And the design? So, sorry.
Okay. Ms. Fisher will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Jordan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I can say that. Allegiance. Please rise for the invocation, the prayer and pledge.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, you are the giver of all good gifts. We thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all of our staff members and our supportive community members. We ask that you bless them abundantly. As we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength, be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all of those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from shortsightedness, pettiness, and self-interest. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all, and grant us humility in all that we say and do. We give you the glory now and always. Amen.
The candidate presenting the national colors tonight will be introduced by Colonel Rodney Scott Robinson from Fort Myers Senior High School's JROTC program. Colonel Robinson retired from the Army in March 2010. After 29 years of service, Colonel Robinson holds a master's degree in Strategic Studies from the United States Army War College. Colonel Robinson has been a Lee County JROTC instructor since July 2012.
Thank you. The national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight are presented by Cadet Major Janay Hawkins, executive officer for the Green Wave Battalion, Fort Myers High School, JROTC. As a freshman, she received the Take Stock in Children scholarship. Currently, she has a 3.78 GPA and is dual-enrolled in Florida Southwestern State College. Aside from academics, Janay has run track and went to the World Series to represent the state of Florida with her softball team. As a 16-year-old, Cadet Hawkins has been accepted into Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. She will major in Aviation Business Management this next fall. Upon graduation, she plans to become an officer in the United States Air Force, flying cargo aircraft, in hopes of following her dream of becoming a commercial pilot. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, oh, did I do something?
No.
Oh, okay. At this time, our student representative Reese Hall will present the character education word and design for March.
So, the character word for March is courage, which means the personal strength to face difficulties, obstacles, and challenges, having the determination to do the right thing even when others don't. And the quote for this is "Courage is resistance to fear, mastery of fear, not absence of fear," by Mark Twain. And the design that you see displayed on the screen was created by Emery Cavan, an 11th grade student at Fort Myers High School. And thank you.
I'm sorry, was she done? Okay.
I would like the following individuals from Benita Springs Middle Center for the Arts to please join me at the lectern. Paul Milford, social worker. Melissa Lehner, principal, as well as assistant principals Jill Cook and Christopher Lighthouse. The school-related employee of the year program provides an opportunity to recognize members of the district's support staff who contribute to their school or department and build positive relationships with those he or she encounters daily. Each year, the district chooses one individual whose dedication and attitude exceed the norm. The recipient of this year's award is Mr. Paul Milford, social worker at Benita Springs Middle Center for the Arts and Pine Woods Elementary, where, as you know, my kids went and go to school. And I will tell you, this man is a rock star. Mr. Milford has been with the district as a social worker since January 2017. He now joins an elite group of people, the school district's best of the best support personnel. Let me read a few quotes that were submitted on behalf of Mr. Milford. "I never understood the impact a social worker could have when one chooses to invest him or herself in the school the way he has. I have never worked with a more engaged social worker." Melissa Lehner, principal. "Paul is an essential member of our team and school community. He goes above and beyond in all that he does and truly cares about our students and their successes." Leslie Gunderson, principal. "Paul is always first to volunteer, the first to lend a helping hand, and the first person many of our staff, students, and parents go to for resources and support." "Paul doesn't truly know how amazing he is at his job. He truly thinks he's just doing his job, but he is doing so much more than that." Sarah Bleacher, school counselor. I will add a quote from Jack Patrica. "I love Mr. Milford." The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize Paul Milford as Lee County's 2019 School Related Employee of the Year. I would like to invite the following people to please join me at the lectern. Marshall Bauer and Beverly Burke from the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, as well as Richard Kudia and Brenda Stebalo from Voice of the Constitution Cape 912, Inc. Also, I would like the following Constitution essay contest finalists to come forward and shake hands with the board members and superintendent. Tara Fent, Benita Springs Middle Center for the Arts. Is Tara here? Okay. Okay. You're welcome. And Alexandra Simone, Three Oaks Middle School. The Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, Voice of the Constitution Cape 912, Inc., and the Lee County School District have partnered to support the teaching of the Constitution each year. Through their generosity, Cape 912 and private donors provided student constitutions free to all seventh-grade civics teachers to support classroom instruction in civics, history, and social studies classes. Students in these classes participated in an essay competition based upon questions from information found in the U.S. Constitution. Each participating middle school selected their best essay to submit to the Foundation and Cape 912, Inc. for the competition. Mr. Richard Kudla, President of Voice of the Constitution Cape 912, will announce the authors of the essay selected as third place, second place, and first place 2019 Constitution Essay Competition winners. Welcome.
Members of the Lee County School Board, parents, children, teachers. Voice of the Constitution is pleased to sponsor the Constitution Essay Contest for the ninth consecutive year. We thank the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools and the Lee County School District for their ongoing partnership and support of this program. We congratulate all of the Voice of the Constitution Essay finalists. You made a fine showing in speaking in words about the American Constitution. Our third-place winner and recipient of a Kindle fire is Alexandra Simone of Three Oaks Middle School. Please come up with your teachers. Teachers Cynthia Restino and Debbie Feit, please join her. Okay. In second place, and also receiving a Kindle fire, is Madeline Perot of Lexington Middle School. Please come up with your teacher, Brandon Smith. Our first-place author's winning essay discussed separation of powers. Congratulations, Marcel Suarez of Gulf Middle School. Please come up with your teacher, Renee Paella, and receive your iPad. And again, thank you for the opportunity to join together with the Foundation for Lee County Schools and Lee County School District for their ongoing partnership in this activity. Thank you.
I would like to invite the following students from Fort Myers High School to join me at the lectern. Tommy Beaton, James Comer, Daquan Crawford, Ricardo Soto-Alvarez, Dominic Dedito, David Loudon, Destin Silbozian, I'm not sure I said that right, but I apologize, Ryan Oakes Lotteridge, Paris Thompson. I would also like to invite the coaches, Tatum Hayes, Javin McCollum, and Garrett Copeland. The Green Wave United Team brought home a community-level state championship by defeating Broward County 39 to 14 on February 9, 2019, at Taveras, Florida. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize these fine athletes for their statement championship win, along with their coaches, for their commitment, determination, and hard work that led them to this outstanding accomplishment. Thank you.
The Florida Music Educators Association All-State Music Conference was held January 9 through 13, 2019 in Tampa. Ten elementary, as well as 42 secondary school students from the Lee County School District, attended and earned all-state recognition and awards in various areas. Lee County was well-represented at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, and in all categories of orchestra, chorus, and band. Students from five elementary schools, please come forward. Students from Cape Elementary, Edison Park Creative and Expressive Arts Elementary School, North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, the Alva School, and Three Oaks Elementary were selected for high honors in the all-state elementary choral ensemble. Please come forward.
You got your...
Good job.
Okay, moving on to the middle school level. Students from Challenger Middle School, please come forward. Challenger Middle School students were selected for high honors in vocal and band ensembles. Please come forward. Okay, it's Cypress Lake Middle School turn. Students from Cypress Lake Middle School, please come forward. Cypress Lake Middle School students were selected for high honors in vocal and band ensembles. Celeste Schreiber from Diplomat Middle School, please come forward. Celeste was selected for high honors in the band ensemble. Students from North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, middle grades, please come forward. North Fort Myers Academy students were selected for high honors in vocal, band, and orchestra ensembles. Students from Oak Hammock Middle School, please come forward. They were selected for high honors in orchestra and band ensembles. Lane O'Connor from Dunbar Middle School, please come forward. Lane was selected for high honors in the band ensemble. Marissa Spur from Veteran Park Academy for the Arts, Middle School Division, please come forward. Marissa was selected for high honors in vocal ensemble. Okay. Samara Bates from Varsity Lakes Middle School, please come forward. Samara was selected for high honors in the band ensemble. Okay, I might have missed one. Let's see. I was just... Okay. Challenger, Cypress, Diplomat, North Fort Myers, Oak Hammock, Dunbar, Veteran Park, Varsity Lakes. You told me I missed one?
Santa Val's not here.
Oh. Okay. So we're good? Okay. Sorry, I was... It's a long list. And now, we're moving on to the high school level. Patton Tucker from Benita Springs High School, please come forward. Patton was selected for high honors for the band ensemble. Raymond Brown from Cape Coral High School, please come forward. Why does it say... This says Raymond Brown from Cape Coral High School, please come forward. Then it says Emily was selected... Raymond was selected for high honor, sorry, Raymond, in the band ensemble. Hey, I'll just read them, folks. Your new name, Emily? Students from Cypress Lake High School, please come forward. Cypress Lake students were selected for high honors in vocal, orchestra, and band ensembles. orchestra, and band ensembles. Christian Snedeker, from Estero High School, please come forward. Christian was selected for high honors in the band ensemble. Is Christian here?
No.
Okay. Grace O'Connor, from Fort Myers High School, please come forward. Grace was selected for high honors in the band ensemble. Students from Island Coast High School, please come forward. Island Coast students were selected for high honors in the vocal ensembles. Students from Lee High Senior High School, please come forward. Lee High Senior High School students were selected for high honors in band and vocal ensembles. And last, but certainly not least, students from North Fort Myers High School, please come forward. North Fort Myers High School students were selected for high honors in orchestra, band, and vocal ensembles. The school board and superintendent congratulate all the students who earned All-Star...I'm sorry, All-State Recognition, and of course, their music teachers. And I wonder how many of the recorder students that we saw this evening will be up here in a few years receiving these awards. Thank you.
Well, we were gonna take a brief recess so you can leave, and I think everybody already knows that part. You can wait a second while we give Betsy our Fitbit.
My steps in.
You got all your steps in tonight. Okay, our next section is public comment. Mr. Dotick, will you address the agenda item?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on the meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you do not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Gittens, the board chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing are prohibited. Tonight, this time per speaker is three minutes. I have 13 cards.
We offer the opportunity to those who may be unfamiliar with the public comment to raise their hands and provide their names if they haven't gotten a card previously. The blue card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. If you did not complete a blue card and you are on my left... Any hands? Any on my right? Okay. And after completing your comments, make sure that we have a card... We don't have any extras, right? Okay. Alrighty. And I want to remind you as well that one of our ways of work is that there will not be any speaking negatively about anyone at any time. Okay? Are we ready, sir?
Randy Scott.
Did we change board policy and now we can't talk negative? They can't answer me because that's board policy. I'm interested to know, at the workshop, that you spent a considerable amount of time investigating a non-investigation. The letter that you're referring to, Ms. Patrica, the best that I know, wasn't under an investigation, right? Right? Otherwise, all this stuff that I write to you and other people write to you, is each one of those letters an investigation? No, you toss them out, you put them in the bin, right? The one I gave you on December 8th, was that an investigation? Where is that? You're spending many money on reckless politics. But if you go down that route, then let's look at the sales tax. Let's hire an attorney. Let's look at them, the letters I've been sending you, how Mr. Dotick sent that final authorization letter on November 7th, saying that you complied with the statutes when you did not. Your resolution was correct. You presented it before this board on February 5th. You transferred it over to the Lee County BOCC shortly thereafter. They approved it, they gave it to the supervisor. Somewhere along that line, Amy Desmore connected with Bernie Feliciano over at the Supervisor's Elections Office, and they changed the language. It wasn't what your resolution was. So if you want to do an investigation, let's dig into the weeds, deep into the weeds. Let's look at Brian Riss's involvement. Let's look at who's been manipulating the process in order to gain that small margin of 8,000 votes. Because there, it isn't just gonna be a fine. Thank you.
Randy Markreth.
Hey, my name is Randy Markreth. I'm a veteran teacher of 29 years in the district. 28 of them at Diplomat Elementary as the art teacher. The old saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." Well, today, it takes a family to raise a child. Diplomat is just that, a family, made up of administrators, teachers, staff, students, and parents. Arts are important at our school, for our students. We all work together as specials, art, music, media, PE, working hard in order to complete a learning environment for our students. At Diplomat, we're kind of like the spices on the meal. Without the spice, the learning can be bland tasting. We add the flavor to the main meal of learning, because we are part of the main meal. The arts are important. Performance at our school, each grade level performs a grade level performance for the families and parents. Not to mention, the teachers perform two-act play called PARP as reading partners, parents as reading partners, to promote reading. We have a new theme every year for exciting learning. Our play follows that theme, "We All Shine," teachers, students, and staff. Our ESE population uses the arts to completely mainstream themselves into the school general population. That's one of our strengths. All students feel like part of the family. They're not just a separate entity of the school. I truly am blessed. I really do have the best job in the school district. I love my job when I do. You're all invited to our school anytime, to come on and sit to a stress-free zone, to sit down and make some art with my students anytime. The door is always open. In closing, arts are important. As an art teacher, we sometimes feel like the orange with a bunch of apples. Our students sometimes feel the same way. We're not...we don't always fit in that simple little square box. We spill over. We color outside the lines, and we're a little messy sometimes, me included. But I would need to remind you, oranges are just as important as apples to nurse a child's learning. They need both of us. Thank you for listening and supporting the arts. I do appreciate all that you do.
Joan Downen.
Hi, my name's Joan Downen. I'm a teacher at the district. We all agree that teachers are underpaid. We know that there's no money in this year's budget. There's none for teachers. We're not likely to see a raise this year. The district proposal in bargaining is to begin paying for this year's raise in July, and spread it out over fiscal year '20. Also, those people who retire or leave before fiscal year '20 don't get their fiscal year '19 raise at all. So in reality, we're not getting a raise this year. We're getting paid in FY '20, and must work in FY '20. This is an FY '20 raise. The real FY '20 raise will not start until December of 2019. I'm letting you know this because the unhappiness of the teachers is not going away. In the past, during contract voting, we were clearly told if it wasn't approved, we wouldn't get our raises, miserable as they were. So we voted yes. But this year, there is no incentive to ratify. Either way, we don't get any money. Once again, we're being asked to accept less than what we are worth. The difference is that many of the teachers are angry. Angry that execs got raises when no one else will. And even though it was explained it was to keep good administrators, how many of them left anyway? We gave them a raise so they would stay, and they leave. That's more than a money problem. We are angry because reimbursement from FEMA is being blamed for a budget shortfall and is being borne on the backs of teachers. That hurricane was a year and a half ago. It's no longer a viable excuse. We're angry because Talc asked the district bargaining team to go to you and request more money. When they came back, they hadn't done it. It is my hope that you have since had that meeting, as promised. Because if you haven't, you need to. This needs to be discussed. You have to do something. And the days of holding a raise over our heads is over because we aren't getting one. So hold a bake sale, sell some property, do what we do with our budgets, but get us a dang raise. Thank you.
Tina Wordeman.
Hello, everyone. Ms. Gittens, I was never so happy to hear you say "an efficient workforce." Because I'll be piggybacking off of my colleague who just spoke over here, and I made a list. There's something happening here. I thought it was unique to my school, then I thought it was unique to my friend's school, then the East Zone. However, I've come to learn, it is widespread across the zones. Behind each one of these names, bear with me, there's a story. Ms. Kelly, Ms. Page, Ms. Clages, Ms. Connors, Ms. Osgood, Mr. Vieira, Ms. Mendoza, Ms. Vega Ross, Ms. Jones, Ms. Malazan, Ms. Val, Ms. Aketalco, Mr. Neal, Mr. Miller, Mr. Southworth, Ms. Martin, Ms. Gannigian, Ms. Cruz, Ms. Hellier, Mr. Lindsay, Mr. Paneco, Mr. Miller, Ms. Thompson, Mr. Casper, he's going back to Jacksonville, can't afford it, Ms. Horn, Palm Beach County grabbed her, Ms. Rollin threw the towel in after 13 years, Ms. England, she's in Marietta, Georgia, says cost of living is lower, pay is more, insurance is one-quarter of what it is here, Ms. Hollahan, Gardner grabbed her, Ms. Williams, Collier grabbed her, Mr. Constant, Hodges just took him, Ms. Cavender, after one year in Lee County, she's going back to Collier, and Ms. Lentz. Ms. Lentz came last year with such passion and such fire as a second-career teacher. Put the low salary and the $850 a month to insure her child in an overcrowded classroom in the East Zone drove her away. Her last day is this Thursday. FGCU grabbed her. Each one of these names that I read, it's either a Lee County teacher from 2018, or this year, with a couple administrators sprinkled in there. Much like we have to accept responsibility in our own classroom for our students' scores, this district must start accepting responsibility for what can only be called a hemorrhage. You can't lay this on your principals either. Some of the hardest-working principals and assistant principals I have ever seen, they're over in the East Zone. It's the district that sets the wages. It's the district that sets the benefits. It's what's chasing teachers out, is the low pay and the benefits. That determines your applicant pool. I'm here to tell you, there's a tsunami coming. So hear me. Teachers, talk. We switch schools a lot, but now we are switching careers. I am predicting, right here and right now, you will see more teachers leave this district this year than you ever have before. Last year was 26.9. It's gonna be a lot more. Up in Hillsborough County, they pay $67,000 a day to Kelly Services for substitutes. You can verify that, I already...
Ms. Wordeman, your time's up.
Thanks.
Samuel Stewart.
Thank you. I'm Samuel Stewart, Lee County resident, and I'm here, Madam President, to compliment you and the board for initiating the School Board Training and Development Program. And I also want to compliment you on your wonderful statement. Thanks to the new press, everybody knows that you had some relationship problems. Now, in every classroom, every day, teachers and students have relationship problems. They have diversity and differences. And so for you to lead, so what better way to lead the schools than to set an example of training, development, and working together? And I know, the more you learn, the better you're going to be, and the better you work together, the more effective you're going to be. So I came here to compliment, and if I have another minute, I want to endorse the young man who spoke about the arts. So thank you and good luck.
Jacob Perez.
Good evening, Board. I wanted to address the issue with the teacher salaries and go over some of the retroactive paychecks that were issued in December, which were $12,400, $13,500, $13,600, $11,200, $5,000, $7,500, $6,500, $4,800, while you have struggling teachers who are not giving the raises that they merit and they deserve. In the last board meeting on February 26th, it was in between the consent agenda items, this board approved those retroactive executive pay raises. I spoke to a few of you board members. You didn't even know it was on there. You didn't even know it was snuck in there. So you approved almost, you approved all these executive raises last year where administrators received a 2.5% in June, and then they received up to 27% or some of them in December, while at the same time, you have an OIG investigation that was being conducted because it was never approved properly by the board. So in that case, you just killed that investigation and put this consent agenda item through, which is not proper. If you're going to talk at 2 o'clock about having an investigation done, why don't you investigate yourselves about approving raises that should have never been approved and putting things on the agenda, not discussing it openly, and letting the public know that you're going to approve these outlandish raises? When you have teachers who are struggling to make ends meet? You have also several letters that I have sent about investigations that have been ignored. One being a child who the OCR found in 2017, the school district was negligent in not protecting that child, and the principal created a hostile environment. That child's records went missing from 2013 until December of 2017. I have written countless letters for an investigation. How can a child's records go missing from a school district, a public school district? Not one of you had the decency to answer me. So if you want to start an investigation, you better start it on every single one of you, every single one of you, and what you've been not doing and doing, and start taking care of the teachers. Good night.
Anthony Thomas.
Good evening, members of the board, fellow citizens. My name is Anthony Thomas, and I rise tonight to talk about a couple things. One of the things I like to talk about is the continual disrespect that certain board members have continued to show to the chairman of the board. They've talked about her African attire. At the last board meeting, one of the board members interrupted the chair, she was trying to conduct the meeting, and said, "Are we going to call the vote?" This is improper. We shouldn't be doing this. I think we're better than this. Now, I find it very interesting. I've been in politics a long time. I'm used to politicians talking total malarkey. But I got to take exception to this bamboozling of the public and buffoonery that's coming from some of you. So I want to get this clear. At the last board meeting, you voted, the majority of you, voted 43 not to have an investigation into serious credible allegations dealing with the maintenance department. But at your workshop this evening, you want to have a vote and want to have a discussion about investigating one of your own members because a letter was sent out. That just makes you wonder. Now, I know some of you, and some of you I know pretty well. I don't understand, at the last meeting, you had your superintendent, who did not object to having an audit of the maintenance department. But yet instead, the foremajority want no investigation, and I don't understand that. I think you guys are sending a terrible message to your staff. But I want to say something to the employees of the Lee County School District. I love this school district. I've been involved with it since I was a high school student at Fort Myers High. We have some of the best people, some of the best teachers and best employees in the country. And I want them to understand something. Even though you have a board who's very intransigent in their belief that they're going to protect the superintendent at all costs, that they've abrogated their responsibilities to do proper oversight, they don't want to do any oversight whatsoever, they don't want to investigate anything. I want you to know that we have some people in the state legislators who are very interested in hearing what you have to say. Call Byron Donalds, who's over the appropriation committee. Our school board members won't investigate public corruption and misfeasance and malfeasance of office, but I think Byron Donalds will. So ByronDonalds@gmail.com. ByronDonalds@gmail.com. I encourage the school district employees to reach out to him. If you know of any example of people who are misusing their power or fleecing the taxpayer, it behooves you to do the right thing and to notify him, because you can actually be protected under the Federal Whistleblower Protection Act, and you also can get a portion of the monies that you save the taxpayer. So stop playing the Lotto and start talking, because snitching pays off. Thank you very much.
Hello, board members. Dr. Atkins, I'm a school teacher here at Lee County. I'm also a Talc rep. I'm a career changer. I came from a healthcare background to technology, loved working and teaching others. Eight years teaching in the school system. I can't afford to teach. As an individual living in this community, no longer married, trying to find a place to live, and be told, "You need to make three times your rent," and you don't as a school teacher. I work two jobs. I also teach in the evening. I teach GED. I teach second language learners. I have five additional jobs at my school, but I cannot afford a place of my own. Dedicating my life to what I love, not just me, I speak on behalf of many teachers in our district. It is emotional. I've sat at these bargaining sessions. I've listened to the people at my school. I've listened to these single mothers not be able to take their babies to the doctor. We are at a crisis. As educators, we can't afford to teach, and I am pleading with the board. I'm probably going to say your name wrong, Ms. Gittens. Last board meeting, I wanted to write you, I just did not write you. I thank you, your passion, your way of speaking, and saying you need to find that one and a half million, or whatever the amount was. I applaud you for that. I ask you, please, let's bring our district, and our Talc, and our Spalc, our Spalc members. They are some of the lowest paid. These individuals, all of them, all employees working in Talc and Spalc, having to go on welfare, having to ask our government, when we give time and time again for our children, countless hours, multiple jobs. Please, find a way to help, because you're losing, and going to continue to lose, people that love what they do, and will give anything for any one of our children. So I'm just asking you to please. You will be approached by the district on Thursday. I was in the meeting last night that was, never in my life experienced anything as bad as it was. We are a community. We are a school district. We are a family. Please, see the needs within the community and help teachers. Thank you.
Alexis Bodett.
Good evening, all attendees of the school board. My name is Alexis Bodett, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my brother, Ryan Hutto, who and which experienced traumatizing threats just of last year, and how it's affected the lives of both of us. Midway through the school year, my brother was put on a hit list, which was written in one of the bathrooms. It didn't take long before the school found the student responsible and punished him, but with an insufficient consequence. Out of fear, my brother and I stayed out of school, struggling to complete work for approximately two weeks. We eventually decided that we had to go back to school, but we still feared what was to come. Everything went relatively well until the last day of school week, when my brother had a pocket knife pulled on him during technology class by a different student. Luckily, my brother was not injured, but I can still imagine how scarring that is to an innocent person who was at the time only 13 years old. What I certainly don't want to imagine is if Ryan had gotten cut or even stabbed that day. It's very sad to think that, just like my brother and I, other students from various schools are afraid of what could be a happy, healthy learning environment. I, along with many others, believe that these school threats and shootings taking place are horrible and need to be stopped. So now the question becomes, how? What can be done to prevent these attacks from taking place? Well, the answer is already provided, and it's quite simple: threats. School shootings or other attacks come after threats, in many cases, along with aggressive behavior from one student to another. But the problem is that these threats are often ignored. Schools should pay attention to these threats and strange, odd, or aggressive behaviors towards other students or staff. Punishing these students more seriously is only fair and will imply that students are out of harm's way. This may even prevent these students from attacking schools before they get the chance. With the help of the school board imposing a rule that directs schools to take any threats or aggressive behavior directed towards students and staff more seriously, along with the punishments of those students, children of the now and of future generations can be insured of security and safety in their schools.
Jacob Pruitt.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Pruitt. I'm the father of four children who currently attend Lee County schools. I came to this meeting today to formally voice my concerns regarding the state of the Lee County School District, specifically concerns about the security of the schools and the safety of the students. About a year ago, my family had firsthand experience of the anxiousness and fear associated with the violence and threats of violence seen far too often across schools in this county. At the time, our oldest son was in eighth grade. One night, while saying goodnight to our son and casually talking to him about his school day, he stated that there was a hit list found written on the bathroom wall in his school and that his name was on it. We were shocked, not only that this happened, but also that we had to find out this way. The administration at the school knew about the incident and attempted to keep it quiet. I'm not sure why they would do this. In the days following, there were more incidents, including a video of a substance meant to resemble blood splattered on the walls in one of the bathrooms at the school. The video is being passed around on social media. Our children missed several days of school because we didn't feel comfortable with the lack of alarm and urgency we felt from the administration. While contacting our children's teachers to make sure that they weren't going to miss any work or be able to make up any work that they did miss, we discovered that a lot of the teachers and staff members were unaware of these threats as well. So these were being kept not only from the students and the parents, but also from the staff members of the school. After a couple weeks of communication with administrators and a meeting here at the district building with some of the administration, we were able to convince the school to enact some changes that cost zero and had some positive effect. After long discussions between my wife, myself, and our children, we decided it would be all right for our children to return to school, and we were wrong. As you just heard, on April 6th, one of my son's classmates pulled out a knife and held it against our son's body. Thankfully, our son was not injured. We immediately rushed to the school to pick up our children, and they had to finish the school year through Lee Virtual School. My children missed out on the last part of their school year, including all of their extracurricular activities they had planned. The child who pulled the knife was never even charged with the assault. This has got to stop. Violence and threats of violence must be acted upon swiftly and firmly. A firm zero-tolerance policy must be enforced, not just enacted, but enforced. The amount of threats we've seen this year is alarming and shameful. The changes that have been made are not enough. They're just not. I'm not here today to point fingers or to place blame, but instead to encourage all the staff members and board members of the district, and all the parents and other family members of the students, to come together and figure this out. We need to protect these children from violence and threats of violence. Thank you for your time.
Ashley Pruitt.
Hi, my name is Ashley Pruitt. I am the mother of four children enrolled in Lee County School District, two in elementary, one in middle, and one in high school. I come before you today after having sent letters to various public officials and legislators, as well as each one of the board members in this room. I sent a total of 27 letters. My journey started barely a year ago, in March of 2018, shortly after Senate Bill 7026 was enacted, when threats at our children's middle school became a several-time-per-week occurrence. During this time, we were only made aware of these threats by our children and other parents. The school had not acknowledged, addressed, or informed parents or staff that these threats were occurring. Only after we reached out to the principal did we receive any communication from the school acknowledging these threats. Therefore, I, like many other parents, feared for the safety of my children and began keeping them home from school as a result of these threats of violence. As a result of the administration's attempt to downplay and not inform parents of each incident, we grew more and more weary of our children's safety and the school's ability to adequately ensure that. So we decided to keep our children out of school for a period of approximately two weeks, all the while keeping in constant contact with each of the teachers and the principal, Mrs. Lehner. We wanted to see that the school was going to start taking these threats seriously and hold these students responsible, accountable, for what they were doing, thus deterring this behavior in the future. Prior to sending our children back to that school, my husband and I additionally met with several administrators, as well as Mrs. Lehner, at the district to discuss what could be done to prevent this from continuing. After this meeting and seeing firsthand that the school had implemented minor changes, we decided it would be okay for our children to return to school and complete the school year. That same week, a student pulled a knife on my son and assaulted him with it in class. We immediately enrolled our children into Lee Virtual for the remainder of the school year, and our children have since returned to a brick-and-mortar school, where they are still faced with the very same issues they dealt with last year, which puts into question the effectiveness of these additional security measures. As a parent, I watched the anxiety on my son's face at the mere thought that something might happen to him, because he no longer feels safe and he does not trust that the school can or will protect him, because you have failed him in the past. Many of the responses I received to my letters lacked real substance, and few have been willing to have real conversations regarding my concerns, often citing the safety measures that have been implemented and the Senate Bill 7026, which clearly did nothing to protect my child and demonstrated that it is therefore an insufficient solution. I come to you at the request of my 14-year-old son, who feels wronged by the school system, who feels the effects of his experience and the incompetence of the school every day. This is not what any child deserves. This district's inaction and inability to adequately control its students has impacted my child forever. I have heard so many excuses and attempted justifications, but actions speak louder than words, and in my opinion, the position of the district and administration has been loud and clear, as well as at the expense of my child, understanding how the district's decision-
Ms. Pruitt, your time's up. Ryan Hutto.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ryan Hutto, the infamous, and I am currently attending Riverdale High School. As you all may have known, on the week of Valentine's Day, my school had been threatened not once nor twice, but three times, five days and three threats. Never once in my life would I have imagined a place where you live, laugh, and learn for six and a half to seven hours a day would turn into- for six and a half to seven hours a day would turn into a living nightmare. As someone who has experienced threats in the past with different schools, this just feels normal. Let me repeat. A note written in one of my school's bathrooms that states Columbine V2 has become normal to me and maybe even normal to other children. I still have nightmares to this day about being put on multiple hit lists and having a knife pulled on me and then having it against my side. I remember my mother bawling in my arms when she couldn't have done anything to prevent what had happened. Before the incident, she had said it was safe to go back to school. I still can't fathom the fact that she had to ensure that a protected area was safe to be in. But really, it was my mother's fault for telling me that I was safe to go back to school again. It was the school boards for not providing a safe and secure environment for children to receive their education in the first place. With all due respect, these aren't just checkmarks on an attendance sheet you should be protecting. These are kids who have a future, who have a family, friends, people that care about them and will do anything to protect them. Why should my mother take the blame for your errors? Why should I have to fear whether I'm going to see my friends or family again because of a school shooting? I'm not just speaking on my behalf either. I'm speaking for the millions of kids who go to school in fear of their lives and can do nothing about it. Now, I'm fully aware that everything is not preventable, but where is the urgency? There's a lackadaisical amount of effort being put in to protect kids like me. I don't want to have nightmares anymore. I don't want to go to school in fear. I want to be able to know that me and my siblings will be back from school safe and sound. So, I guess my question is, when? When has there been too many threats? When has there been too many school shootings? When have enough lives been lost due to the lack of urgency and effort of the school board? It seems like that these threats aren't being taken seriously. But why? Because it's a lousy prank? We all remember what happened when you came to that conclusion about the soon-to-be shooter at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High. So I ask again, when has it been enough?
Dorothy Yordi.
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Yordi, and I'm a music teacher at Edison Park Creative and Expressive Arts School. I came tonight because I wanted to let you know that I'm very thankful for the opportunity to be in the district in Lee County and to be a part of the music department and to be able to teach our children. I want to thank Dr. Santini for his vision, for what's transpiring in our music department here in Lee County, and also for Lee Byer, who is just amazing with all the things that she does for coordinating things and making things put together. I also want to let you know that I have the privilege to be the music teacher at Edison Park. It's one of the only two Florida Model Art Schools in Lee County. We offer music, theater, dance, violin, and art during the school day. And before and after school, we offer ukulele club, boys vocal dance band, drums, chorus, handbells, dance, and an orf ensemble called Epic. We are very busy. But it's great, because our kids are learning and they're growing, and they are amazing. And they are also going out into the community to play and sing for other people, to bring joy to others. One of the most amazing things for me was when I asked the students what they liked the best about going to a rehabilitation center in the holidays. I said, "What did you like the best?" And they said, "We loved being able to have music and perform for them and to watch them smile," because they hadn't had a chance to go anyplace to be able to see that. And so I just love the fact that in their hearts, it's being generated the love for helping and blessing other people. Also, our principal and our school supports the arts, of course, because we are a fine art school, and we have seven shows a year, and we all work together collaboratively. We also combine the arts with academics. I'm right now teaching kindergarten, Seven Continents, and we are singing that and going to perform that for their parents in the spring. So I have also been the co-chair for Lee County Elementary Honor Choir for five years, and I know that it is quite a task to organize such a big event, but it is my privilege to do so, because I believe it is important for our students all across the county to have a chance to come together and to sing and to bless parents and anybody who wants to join and attend. So I love being able to be a part of that. Last week, we had the students sing, and they were absolutely amazing. Ms. Jordan, you were there, weren't you? Thank you for coming. And it was amazing how the kids joined together. We had forty-four music teachers from all over the county, and we had one hundred and eighty students on the stage singing, and we had a wonderful time. Also, another passion of mine is helping music teachers with professional development. I am a part of the orf ensemble, or the orf, I'm the president-elect for Southwest Florida Orf, and in hot pursuit of helping music teachers to grow...
Time's up, Ms. Yordi. That's all the cards tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott has left, so I can contact him later. Randy from Diplomat, I didn't get his name. What was his name?
Margaret.
Okay, Mr. Margaret from Diplomat. And also, I can combine that with Ms. Yordi's comments. Before Dr. Santini leaves, we want to thank him for all of his efforts, and the presentation at the beginning of the meeting is an example of what the arts will do. And I know several of us were downtown for the art walk, was it last week or week before? And it was marvelous just to go from corner to corner and hear some of our students, and they were good. The people walking along were amazed at the students that we have. And next time we do that, I hope we have more of you out to see our students and to cheer them on. The arts is very important. It's a part of that mind development as well. So thank you to all of you. The next items, Ms. Joan Downen, Tina Wordeman, Samuel Stewart, Ms. Perez, and Karen, and I didn't get her last name, I'm sorry. Okay. I am going to ask the superintendent if he would do us a favor. These individuals came tonight to talk from their heart about what their needs are, and if at all possible, I'm not trying to set a precedent that just because you come, you get to do this, but I would like to request that these individuals that came tonight get an opportunity to sit down with you, if you have that ability, just to talk to them as a group, and we can discuss it later and contact these individuals. I think we just need to let people know, we hear you. We know of your concerns, and maybe to, I know you meet with another group of teachers, but perhaps a different perspective might help if that's... Would you be able to do that?
Well, I think, first of all, I believe the group of individuals you named have a different, there's different perspectives there, and not all of them were speaking to the same issue. So that's one item. The second is, if that is something this board would like me to do, I would be happy to do that. You know, I do think that we, I would caution us about setting a precedent when it comes to, you know, public comment and responding to public comment by me meeting with members. You know, I guess if that's what you'd like me to do, I will do that.
Well, and I'm not trying, I said, I'm not trying to set a precedent. I'm just, as a one-time thing, and we would say to everyone, it is not a precedent that you expect to come and speak and then you, you know, get an audience or whatever. But we can discuss it, and we have the cards, and we will get back in touch with the people that spoke on the teacher issue. And Board, would you...
May I suggest that we discuss this during our workshop on Thursday?
That will be fine.
Thank you.
That's good. Okay, and there were one, two, three, four, four people that discussed safety and security. Superintendent, would you like to address the issue of the threats and the things that we have done and what we intend to beef that up in the future?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to do that. And just a reminder to all board members, we are doing a workshop on that very subject, safety and security, so we can discuss it further at that workshop. I will say that I believe that this particular school year, we have done a lot of different measures to make our schools safer, from single-point entry to having, you know, I see as I'm out touring schools, you know, more and more schools that have the video surveillance systems that are installed in the front of the building. We are seeing an upgrade in our computer technology so that the digital cameras that you see, you know, they have a better resolution, which helps us in identifying some of these perpetrators if we have an issue that's going on in a restroom and so forth. We have an SRO in every one of our schools at this point, and I'm talking about our regular, you know, elementary, middle, and high schools. They have been doing a wonderful job. I have to commend the sheriff, the county, the city of Fort Myers, the city of Cape Coral, Sanibel, have all stepped up the plate when it comes to providing us school resource officers. That's a tremendous help, because now we have them in every one of our buildings. That's a huge difference from last year. If you recall, last year, Madam Chair, we had a rotation, you know, scheduled that where an officer may have five or six elementary schools. So our chiefs of police and our sheriff and our sitting county officials have, I mean, they've put their money where their mouth is, and that makes a huge difference. I think you saw both the chief at Cape Coral and then also our sheriff join the school district, board members, and myself in press conferences to talk about the importance and the seriousness of these threats. You know, I think that those public service announcements, while probably resulted in a little bit of an uptick because of the additional attention that came to that issue, I think resulted, hopefully, in a decline, because we did see, you know, arrests and serious consequences for many of those students. Having said that, I mentioned earlier that there are other issues in our schools that are, that have to do with safety and security, and I'll take this opportunity to inform the public. You know, vaping has become a serious issue in our schools, and that is something that I would like all our parents and community members to be aware of. We are going to be doing more public service announcements and outreach to our parents and community members, because we feel our parents need to be informed about this serious health issue that is impacting our students, is also impacting safety and security of our buildings, and this is something that's not just a Lee County problem, but it's a problem across this nation. So that's what we're doing to this point. I do think that we, we're working with Mr. Blerton to look at additional staffing so that we can help with the supervision within, in particular, our high schools, to help combat this very issue. We're also looking at working even differently with law enforcement to also help identify those students that are involved in those type of activities and bring it into that as well. So a lot of different things that we've got going on. It's never enough, but we're working real hard to make it more safe in our schools every single day. So I hope that answers your question. And again, just to, I want to go back to the other one. I don't want to, I certainly understand where you're coming from. We want to be responsive to our public. And, you know, I have been pretty open with meeting with people, some of the people that came to the podium this evening, I have met with on various occasions throughout the years. And, you know, I do want to do what you and the board desire me to do. So I don't want to, you know, make it appear like I'm...
No.
I want to acknowledge that desire.
And I understand that. And like we said, we'll discuss it. I don't want to try to set a precedent, although maybe that's what we need to do, is to set a precedent. We need to figure, when we continually hear the same thing, what do we do? Do we, how do we acknowledge it, and how do we go forward? And we, just to let everyone else know, on Thursday afternoon, we are having a workshop on transparency, and we will be talking about what that means. I'm sure everybody in this room probably has a different angle or view of something that's transparent. If we all sat on the corner and watched an accident happen, and we were all in different places, on different corners, we'd see it different. So we need to discuss how we can bring all of that together to make sure that everyone's needs are met and the issue of transparency is addressed, and we will do that on Thursday.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
You know, again, when you first made that request, the speakers that you named, some of them seem to be talking about different topics. Some of them were talking about the compensation. I can address that, but there were other ones that were on other issues.
And I just, I was basically mentioning, for the sake of the compensation. I didn't, you know, want to get into a whole plethora of things, but just on the compensation.
Okay. We do, we are talking to the board, hopefully, Thursday, and, you know, because, again, this is, we are in collective bargaining, so we don't have an end. You know, the district offers options, and, you know, the bargaining unit offers options, and then we hope to come to an agreement. So we're at a place where I think we need to see some movement, one way or the other, and therefore, we're coming back to the board. I am meeting with staff tomorrow, in fact, to talk about that very issue, so... But, you know, like, again, we have a long history of working positively on behalf of our employees, and we hope that that continues, because I think we all feel the same. There's not a person up here or out there that I think feels differently about this issue. We want to do as much as we possibly can.
And I understand that. I am personally very concerned about the fact that we are losing so many teachers, and it isn't stopping. So I'm hoping we do something sooner than later, and I know that we're working on it.
Just to address that issue as well, you know, that's something that I know Human Resources does monitor on a regular basis. We are a very large school district. You know, we have almost 6,000 teachers and 13,500 employees overall, so we are going to have some attrition. And nationally, this is an issue that, you know, that we deal with as a nation. You know, it's a national statistic when we say, you know, forty to fifty percent of teachers leave within the first five years. That's a national statistic. Dr. Pruitt does monitor this. We, as you know, our retention improved last year, and my understanding is this year's numbers right now are trending in a very similar manner as what we were doing last year. So having said that, I'm also well aware that this is a huge issue for our teachers, not only just in Lee County, but across the state of Florida and this nation. And, you know, it's, so we, as community members, will have to continue to make, I think, significant sacrifice to, again, be able to compensate our frontline the way it needs to be, the way they need to be compensated, which is why, you know, we did start that budget process early and why we are looking at cutting, really drastically making changes in terms of how we're staffing for this upcoming year, recognizing that this was going to be a lean year. So we proactively took steps, and we will continue to do that. We did not step, you know, we did not sit back and just take what was given to us. We instead went at it in August so that we could put something on there that, again, breaks the trend of what we are provided as a district. So, and I commend, you know, all of my team, but also this board, for supporting us in those efforts. We'll continue to work on this as a team, and I think we'll get to a solution, one way or the other.
And I would just like to say, in conclusion, we... And I would just like to say, in conclusion, we, our, our goal is to be a world-class school system. I hope that we can find ways to be the leader in this topic and be world-class and let the other districts know how to do it the proper way. Okay? Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to consent items. Next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the material. We have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on an action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull under discussion of unfinished business or table items? Ms. Fisher?
I have no pulls because my questions were answered in advance of this meeting.
We're becoming world-class, that's why. Ms. Giovinelli?
I have one, just for discussion.
Okay. And do you want to give us a number?
It's the, it's the e-consent item for the good cause.
Good cause item, okay. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
No, thank you.
And Ms. Vaughn?
No, I do not.
Ms. Morgan?
And I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with the exception, I can say that, exception of the good cause item?
So moved.
Okay.
I'm just a second.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. While we're doing that, do you want me to wait on that? Okay.
You're making me old, Ryan.
I know. Her lips are turning blue and I...
I can't wear my blanket because...
Why not?
Because it's advertising and it's a professional team.
So, you need to get one with the school district on it.
Yes, I can.
She's got one on her leg. She's got one.
Are we ready? Okay, all right. This motion is to approve the agenda's consent items with the exception of the good cause item for tonight, and the motion was made by Ms. Vaughn. Is that still stand?
Yes.
And seconded by?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan. She's still seconding. Okay, please record your votes, and of course, mine is off.
I'm trying to click on it, and nothing's happening.
Can we orally record my vote?
We're gonna have to orally record my vote.
Okay.
Something about this station where no computer wants to work tonight.
It's cold, that's...
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yes. Thank you.
No voting, yes. Okay, so the motion carries. We have one poll to address.
Hold on, did everybody record their vote?
Well, except for, Ms. Patrica could not, so she recorded it for...
I just didn't see it up there, fair enough.
Okay, thank you, Sizer. Dr. Atkins, would you please read the polled item and inform us what that's about?
Yes, the polled item approval of the Florida Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Scholarship Program Grant Proposal requesting $5,398,272. Approval authorized the superintendent to execute related documents and to approve normal and customary accounting, bookkeeping, and payroll processes to maintain continuity of federal and state expanded, grant expenditures during fiscal year changes and other technical transitions. Any processes so approved by the superintendent will represent best practices and will conform to funding agency regulations.
Okay, is there a motion for the polled item for discussion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And a second. Okay, Ms. Morgan and Ms. Vaughn. And is there any discussion?
Yeah, so I am supporting this this evening, but I just want the community to know that, you know, we are going to hold people accountable for any mistakes, but on the Best and Brightest that was underreported. So, I just, but I am supporting that this evening. That's it. For me.
Okay. For, just for the sake of clarity, can, can we explain what happened?
I could certainly do that.
Please, thank you.
We were required to, as a district, to submit information about eligible classroom teachers to the Florida Department of Education in January, and then FLDOE amended the submission forms and process without notice to districts until documentation was distributed statewide. While we received our, we received our payment of the Best and Brightest Award on March 1st, 2019. While preparing and reviewing that amount, those papers, staff noticed an error on the form submitted to the Department of Education. They immediately prepared an amended form and notified the Florida Department of Education. The underreporting error resulted in a change in forms and how teachers receiving more than one award were reported. The district underreported the number of teachers who were eligible to receive the 1,200 individual award. 224 teachers who are eligible to receive the 7,200 final award were not included in that column, and so this resulted in the underreporting. Now, the Florida Department of Education disperses funds based on the forms that they receive. So, they have done that, and they have distributed funds out to the districts. So, you know, they have no additional program funds at this time. All eligible teachers are required to receive their Best and Brightest Awards no later than April 1st, which is, again, why I brought it, good cause this evening. Therefore, the district general fund will need to cover the difference resulted by that underreporting until the end of the fiscal year. At the end of the fiscal year, we hope that the state is able to recoup some of those dollars that were distributed that were not distributed on out to employees across the state. And if, at that time, they have the funding, they will provide that to Lee County. We can distribute it. If not, we will need to cover that, continue to cover that with our district funds, up to $200,000. We do have an insurance policy called errors and omissions, which covers the district beyond that amount. So, that is what we have done. And I'll just have to say, on behalf of, of staff, they notified me, I think, immediately upon detecting this. I requested the division chief to prepare a memo for me, which she did over this weekend, and then I sent that to you on Monday. So, and then tried to contact every single one of you to make sure you were aware of all of this stuff. So, that is, that is what occurred, and I assure you that we will take a look at our process and make changes accordingly.
Thank you.
Question I have, so, in other words, some teachers are supposed to get 1,200 and some 7,200, is that correct?
Well, there's, there's differences in the amount, and, and I don't know if I can ask somebody to come up here and maybe explain that to the board better than, than I do. I know that different, different teachers, depending on whether they're, I think, highly effective or ineffective, and then you have principals that receive the award.
That's okay. Oh, go ahead.
All right.
Yeah, I had a question on it, and I will be supporting this because our teachers need this bonus that they well deserve. But, I've heard this, and you did tell all of us about that in a timely manner, but I've heard it attributed to HR, and what I was wondering is, is there a double check? Does, because obviously, the money comes in through finance, is there, is there a double check on this accounting that came out of HR?
I will have to ask staff that, and I will be more than happy to provide you with the answer.
Yeah, if you could get back...
Yes, ma'am.
With that answer. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Will do.
And I have one other question. What is the, do we know what the cost is going to be to us? Because you said the, up to 200,000. Is it after the 200,000 that our insurance kicks in? Is that our deductible, is the 200,000?
That is correct. That is correct.
And do we know what the cost is yet? Any idea?
We won't know that until we have identified every teacher that has those, has that amount or that award coming to them, distribute those dollars, and see what is remaining. Because if we, out of the possible 224 teachers, let's say, it's very likely that not every single one of those 224 teachers is still teaching within the state of Florida. So, if they've left the profession, if they've left the state, they wouldn't be eligible. So, once that is determined, we will come back and let you know what the final number is, and then we'll keep you posted in terms of the status of, of receiving dollars from the state as well.
Okay. So, worst-case scenario, we'd have to spend $200,000, and we are hoping to recoup that if we do, from the state, when they do have their additional funds?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Okay. So, I believe now, do we, go ahead and do, Mr. Dodeck, do we go ahead and do all of it?
Motion in a second, so you call for, if, if the discussion is done, you call for the vote.
All right. Is there any other discussion from anyone?
Vote needs to be verbal, I think.
Yes, okay. No other discussion, then let's do a verbal vote. Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Giovinelli?
Aye.
Patrica?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Seven zero, it passes. Okay, Dr. Atkins, are there any administrators in attendance for the new assignment?
Not this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay. And, let's see, none, 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 none. Other business, we are down to board comments. Hopefully, I haven't forgotten anything. So, Ms. Fisher, would you like to go?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. In a time when our economy is good, I'm distressed that we don't have money for salaries for teachers, and I'm looking forward to Thursday's workshop, hopefully to have more conversation on that. Regarding the safety and security, I know that we have done a lot in hardening our schools, and that may be part of the solution. But, the issue that was described by the family here tonight was about the behavior of students. So, and I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again, so in the last couple of decades, we have been very focused on test scores and reading and math, and we have not spent the time that we once did on social skills, character education, healthy habits, relationships, self-esteem building. And I think that we really need to take a look. Today, I was reading the news press, and there was an article that talked about how social-emotional learning actually increases academic scores. I did not bring that with me today, but I wish I had so that I could share it with you now. But, I, I think we need to take a look at, and, and Mrs. Patrica usually says, when she says hardening the schools, I say softening the schools, and I think we need to look at that. Our schools are a microcosm of society. The climate in our country right now is not a good one. With social media and video games, kids are exposed and desensitized to violence. So, I think we really need to look at what we can do in, in collaboration with families. And families aren't what they used to be either. We have more and more children who are living with grandparents and foster places who are homeless. So, we have a, a country of kids in crisis, and, you know, we can only do what we can do, but I think we have to do something. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Giovinelli?
I had a motion. Is this one, I should bring that up, my motion?
Sure.
So, okay. So, I've been discussing, actually advertising the, well, actually broadcasting and the, I can't even speak, I'm sorry, the advisory meetings, and, like, I've talked to other municipalities locally in Lee County, and they broadcast their advisory meetings. So, I, after speaking the other night with some people from the Oversight Committee, they like the fact, a lot of people in the community like the fact that that's being advertised and televised so that everyone can see that. So, tonight, I wanted, I wanted to bring a motion for all advisory board meetings to be televised. So, I make the following motion to, to direct the superintendent and the board chair to work together to schedule advisory board meetings to be televised.
Okay. And what is the status?
That's a motion, so you need a second.
Oh, okay.
I seconded, I seconded it.
Okay. And, so who, you made the motion, she seconded, so now we can have a discussion, correct?
Well, basically, I just told, I, I said what I, my discussion really is, just that the, the community is really liking the fact that the Oversight Committee meeting is being televised, and they really, they can see that live or they can see it later, and they like that. And they're, and so, I think, therefore, in the spirit of transparency, this would allow opportunity for other people to see the Finance Committee and the EDAC and so forth, and as well as myself, if I, since I can't attend, like, EDAC and, because of our sunshine, I think that it would allow us to see how the meetings are going and be more up to date and up to speed on what's going on in the other advisory meetings. That's, that's how I feel.
Are there comments? Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention why I'm supporting this. I agree that we need to have those televised, and as Ms. Giovinelli just said, yes, it's for the benefit of the community, but I feel that I personally, as a board member, would also benefit from it because, and I think all of us would, because we can then see in real time, or very soon after a meeting has occurred, you know, what did the Finance Committee, you know, we get our reports, and that's good, but we can find out directly what is occurring in, in those meetings. So, I think it would, I know for a fact it would benefit me, and I'm thinking that other board members might feel the same way.
Other discussion, Ms. Patrica?
I believe that our advisory committees have been scheduled for the remainder of the year, and I'm not at all opposed to televising them, but I, I don't know how logistically we get that done with this many months left in the year. I, I know that the superintendent showed me an estimate for the video equipment that would be necessary in order to televise them from the rooms in which the meetings take place. Is that accurate? Is that what I got from you?
If we were to outfit Training Room A and B, right over here, it would cost $34,400.
So, again, you know, this is about transparency. Can we have this discussion all at once instead of one-offs here and there? I'd like to make a motion to table until after Thursday's transparency workshop. Does that get a second?
It needs a second. There's no discussion on a motion to table. It takes priority over the original motion. And just let me give you some advice. If a motion is tabled, or an item is tabled, which is what the motion is, that matter gets put on subsequent agenda until it's removed from the table, okay, by a board member.
Further discussion, is that...
There's no discussion for a motion to table. So, that's a priority motion. So, that would need a second, and then a vote.
And that would cut off any discussion at this point?
It has, correct.
I seconded it.
Okay. So, now, call, you have to call the vote, Ms. Gittens.
Is there a vote to table this?
I would suggest you do it verbally.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Fisher?
No.
Giovinelli?
No.
Patrica?
Aye.
Patrica?
Aye.
Okay, Jordan?
No.
Vaughn?
No.
Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote no to table. I think we need to...
So, the motion to table fails.
Right.
So, you're back to the original motion.
Right.
And you can continue discussion.
Is there, yes.
So, okay, so, I don't know, I don't think we need to spend the money to, to do that room. I think they can, can do it out in the, in the pit like Oversight Committee does. And we can be lenient if the, if the schedule conflicts, but I think we can, until, we've been videotaping ourselves in there on our own workshops with the, with our staff. I think that that could still happen in the other room. happen in the other rooms, if that's until we, as a board, decide to spend the money. We've got the tax money now, we can spend the $34,000, but I think we, that's something to talk about, but I'm not recommending to spend the money at this point in time. I'm just saying, let's work on our transparency and televising our advisory meetings. And one other thing that I wanted to discuss, to think about that, and, do we want to televise our students as well, that advisory meeting? And I was wanting to get your input on that, and maybe even maybe getting the students' input on that. Would they be open to being televised with parent permission, obviously?
And before you respond, Ms. Jordan was next, and then we can get back to you.
Well, that was part of what I was going to say as well, plus the fact that the people that are already on the advisory board, boards, we would definitely need to speak with them to see if that's something that they would be okay with us doing that as well, because I'm, they did not sign on for that, when they did sign on to be on these committees. Plus the fact there's committees that run at the same time, so I don't think we could put everybody in here. We'd have to reschedule, so all this stuff's going to take time.
And we can make it at a later date, I, you know, and work towards that. I'm not opposed to that as well. I just think that it's something that we really need to pursue.
Plus, not only is, it takes another person too, so, an employee to run all the equipment. So we've got to remember that as well.
Can I make a suggestion that, to me, the three advisory boards that are most important at this time, especially with us getting the tax referendum money, would be Finance, Construction, and Oversight. And if there were a way to have those three financial ones at this time, and then at a later date, we can look at doing all the rest of them. Yes?
Well...
I'm sorry. Yes.
Didn't we already vote to equip, was A and B?
No.
For workshop? What?
No, it was discussed, but we...
It was discussed, but we didn't vote. But we have already discussed that because we hold workshops in there sometimes.
And I believe we voted to have the Oversight Committee in here. That was...
Okay. That was one, and I had something else, that it may be kind of out of order because of the motion, but I know one stumbling block is going to be that we have some meetings at the same time, and we already have rooms scheduled for the rest of the year. But, I wanted to put in there, we record, don't we? We, is my question. We currently audio-record, but the last I heard, to get an audio recording, you had to actually go through public records and come and get, is there a way, and technology, is there a way that these audio recordings can be real-time, or like a podcast, or, I don't even know what I'm saying, podcast, aren't they real-time? Or something like that, like a radio show, or some way that we can at least, perhaps for the rest of the year, do that? And I'm still with the original motion to move forward for the next year to have that in place. So am I totally off?
No.
Off the motion?
I think you're fine.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
Okay. I believe that what Ms. Giavinelli is asking is aligned with our strategic plan, and I think it makes a lot of sense. I am concerned that a motion has been made, and we're sitting here having a conversation about process. I think the appropriate thing to happen is that this board direct, tell the superintendent that we would like to be in a position to videotape all of our advisory meetings, and for staff to come back to us and say, effectively, this is the impact of doing it. We either have to schedule everybody in this room, starting with a new advisory schedule, and figure that out, or we're going to, but for us to sit here and discuss the implementation of this motion, that's why I wanted to table it. I just feel that, I can't support that motion now because we don't know what we're doing. We know that we have a goal, and the goal is to have the advisory committees videotaped. Can we just stop there and ask for the staff then to respond to that goal?
Superintendent had a question, and Ms. Giavinelli?
It wasn't a question, I was just...
I mean, a statement.
The suggestion I was going to make was very similar. It was just that, given all the things that I've heard from board members, that, to take that collectively and provide the board with some options in terms of what we can do. You know, we've got the cost here, but, you know, you're also considering the cost of staff time, and of course, the schedule. There are other alternatives we could explore as well, such as the podcasting idea, or the broadcasting of recordings. So, if you just, you know, give me an opportunity, we'll try to do some preliminary stuff, hopefully by Thursday, so at least we get an idea. I don't want to overpromise, but we will certainly be happy to provide you with a plan, with options.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to remind you all that I did ask this, I brought this up before, and Stillwell, Stillwell back there said she would get that information, and that never happened, except for that you got a price for the room for $34,000. So, this, we're having the same conversation again, that's why I brought it, I didn't, I brought it for discussion before, this time I'm bringing it back for a motion, because I'm, I don't know how long we wait, because then is it going to happen again, another three or four months down the road? And then, then it's, we have to wait for 2021. So, I mean, I think we need to talk about, I think it needs to be decided now. That's all.
Well, I think that, given what you just said, I mean, you have, you are talking about it right now, and if the board is making this request of me and my staff, then what we would do is go forward and implement that request. It's that, I look at it as pretty simple. We'd be, I'd be happy to do that.
Can we rephrase it then? I don't know how everybody feels, since we are near the end of the...
You can only do that through a motion to amend.
Okay, that would be neat.
And the motion to amend has to be passed, and then you would have to agree on the language, and then go back to the original motion as amended, and vote on it again. So...
So, to piggyback on Mrs. Morgan's, and the simple thing would be to direct the superintendent to bring back the possibilities and the options, including the timeline, because it may not happen this month, but that's his job and the staff's job, that's not necessarily our job. So if we do that, I think it simplifies it, and we can all support that.
How can I, how can I state that this is just discussion, so I can still discuss, correct?
You can, but I just want to read the motion as I understand it.
Right. And I just needed to make...
Can I do that, Joe, just so, you hear it again? The motion is to direct the superintendent and board chair to work together to schedule all advisory board meetings to be televised.
That's why I wanted to make some discussion about that. The timing in the year, and the timing with us receiving the tax money, my, the suggestion I was trying to say, instead of all advisory boards being in there, that we specify, we're already doing, I think, the, are we already doing the Oversight? So just at Finance and Construction, just those three? And I don't know how we would put that. Yes?
I don't, I don't think one of our advisory committees is any more important than the other. Referendum dollars cannot be used to pay for this equipment, because it was not part of the referendum that was approved by the, by the public. I don't think that there's one of the seven of us that disagrees that these should be televised. I think it's the logistics and exactly what Ms. Morgan said. So, I think we have agreement, it's just, we don't have the details. We need the details in order to support the motion as stated.
Well, aren't the, and I hate to belabor this, but saying to the superintendent to get with the staff to schedule all advisory board meetings going forward and televise them is different than saying from now until the end of this year, or whatever, to schedule three. I mean, and I understand what you're saying, that none are more important than the others, but in a sense, right now, those three are the most important.
Actually, academics is the most important thing that we do, so curricular advisory could arguably be the most important. And the other thing too, is I would like an opportunity to discuss it with Finance Advisory, and have each of you bring it back to their advisory committees. People might want to step down. They might not want to be on a committee that's televised. So I think we owe them the respect of giving them the option of stepping down if they don't want to do it. I agree they should be televised, just give us some time, please.
Okay.
So, if there's no further discussion, because this was a board member, oh...
Read, would you read the motion as...
Sure.
One more time, please?
Sure. The motion is to direct the superintendent and board chair to work together to schedule all advisory board meetings to be televised.
Okay. So what's missing from that is a timeframe. So, that's not saying that it needs to be done tomorrow, or this, you know, it just says to move forward with that. What I want to do is move forward with it, and not, you know, Mrs. Giavinelli mentioned, which I didn't know, that you'd already brought it, brought it up and talked with Ms. Stillwell about it. I didn't realize you talked with her about it. And so this has been a discussion in the past. So all that I'm asking is that we vote on what Ms. Giavinelli said, there is no timeframe. We can, you know, to work with the superintendent and staff, right? And that would be to work on what is viable, and what can we do? And I think that, you know, we can do this at a reasonable cost and satisfy transparency.
Do you want to hear from Ms. Stillwell before we move forward?
Hold on. There's a motion in a second, the discussion is with the board and the superintendent, not with... At this point, Ms. Stillwell can certainly speak during the public comment, so I'm not trying to limit the staff from speaking, but...
So basically, we have to pass the motion, and then there's discussion?
Right.
Okay.
Discussion.
Right.
We had it.
You have to have public comment to support school board policy, and I have some cards. So, the first speaker is Anthony Thomas, and each speaker will have three minutes.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Anthony Thomas. This is a no-brainer, so let's go over a couple of things. You currently have six advisory boards, one of them already meets on television. We're talking about five advisory boards who meet within a 30-day window period. Five, Mary. If you're telling me that your staff can't finagle to get this scheduled, so five committees and a 30-day window, you need to get some new staff. All right? So let's not, you know, sometimes in politics, when you can't argue the position is wrong, you argue the process. So let's hear what some of our friends are saying. Well, Melissa, we agree with you on the policy, but let's talk about procedure. This isn't about procedure, this is about certain individuals who don't want transparency. We've got five, six boards here. Why, Gwen, with all due respect, do we want to allow the public to see what three boards do and not what the two other ones? You're disrespecting the other people that serve on the other boards. Let's keep in mind, the city of Fort Myers, the city of Cape Coral, the city of Fort Myers Beach, all of these people have standing advisory boards that advises their city councils. And every single case, in the county, in the cities in our county, they meet in the public, they have public input, they allow the public to participate in the process. What Ms. Giavinelli is talking about, this has been talked about ad nauseam. She has a vote, she's made a motion, it's been seconded. If you don't like it, vote no. But we're not going to change the motion, Melissa. You have to agree as the motion maker, let's tell you about Robert's Rules of Order. As the motion maker, you have to agree to any secondary amendment to your motion. Don't agree to any secondary amendment to your motion. Now, finally, let me say, so there's a motion made, it's very clear, I don't know why there, there's no ambiguity about what she's trying to do. Gwen is the chair of the legislative branch of our local government. Atkins is the CEO of the executive branch. These advisory boards are school board advisory boards. They're not the superintendent advisory board, they're your advisory boards. We don't need to care what the superintendent or his staff need to think about when they meet. These are your advisory boards. So that's why Melissa very wisely said to have the superintendent work with the chair of the school board, that they can come together, we're simply rearranging, and I don't think you have to, if the argument that my friend Patrica says is that we will lose citizens, they will resign off the committee because they don't want to govern themselves in the sunshine, I don't think you'll have one person that will resign from the committee. So let's stop the dilatory tactics, let's stop the nonsense, but if they do want to resign, good rhythms, we don't need them. If you can't operate in the sunshine, we don't want you here. Thank you.
Remy Scott.
Remy Scott, former FAC committee, and I have a webpage called Facebook Transparency, Lee County School District. I've been filming those meetings that Ms. Patrica don't like me to film. The individuals that are part of it, they are required to live in the sunshine. You guys even discussing this is actually a little disgusting to me. We live under a constitution, we live under the First Amendment. The fact that you guys would want to enclose yourself in a cave, and say, what we want to do is what we want to do, and how dare you question the great and powerful elected officials? There's something wrong with your thinking process. I think part of it is being on-boarded. You weren't elected by the Florida School Boards Association, but yet, you've become them, and that's a shame. Some of you went out there promising transparency, some of you went out there promising accountability. And what kind of message was that? I've sat on the FAC committee with Patrica, and as soon as I started coming up with the numbers on finance that weren't consistent with what the messaging of your talented communications department does, all of them ex-news media from this area, they are talented, they frame the narrative. You want that message to continue to go out there, and that message is not transparent, it's one-sided, like the Cape Coral bus fire. Transparency, would have said, that was an issue. That was an issue with our chief mechanic not having certified drivers. The only way, the only way that you will know about that...
On the motion itself, and I'm...
I am speaking transparency, Ms. Patrica, and I would appreciate...
Hold on. I did, I did, I paused your time. The issue that you can speak about is the motion.
No, it's just...
Right. Video, videotaping the advisory committees, or broadcasting them live. Okay. Hold on. I want to start your time again.
All right. It's titled... Their transparency. And, you know, transparency is about one message that you produce only through your communications department. We've seen how that's failed, we've seen the lies over and over again, and the only way for the people to know what you're doing is by allowing the video...
Hold on, I'll pause your time.
We...
I'm sorry, but we just need to talk to the motion.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Raimy Hall.
Other speakers?
I'm glad I was here tonight for this, because I've served on the FAC committee for five years, and I think this is a wonderful idea, Ms. Giavinelli, thank you for bringing this up. I think this is great. If one of our members is absent, or sick, or out of town, they can tune in and watch it. Sometimes when you miss one of these meetings, and you come in the next month, you feel a little, you know, you can read the agenda and the minutes from the previous meeting, but you miss something in actually not being there. I think filming these would be great for the members itself. I think it would be great for the board members. I think you guys need to see what's going on in these advisory boards. Another speaker said, they are your advisory boards, and that is so key. I think sometimes we get in these committees, and we have a certain board member assigned to us, they might bring in their flair or their agenda, and it might not be the agenda of the rest of you. I think that's something you really need to watch in these agendas, so transparency, so you can see what your fellow board members are saying in these meetings, is awesome. I'm going to ask you all to vote yes for this tonight. $34,000 seems insane to video a room. I recently was in a situation where I got a quote on... I, I recently was in a situation where I got a quote on setting up video for a room, and it was nowhere near that. As far as staff having to video, I would encourage you guys to think outside of the box. Use some of your high school students, maybe they can intern, kids that are involved in tech and media, they could come in and get volunteer hours for something like that. I don't think you have to pay staff. I think these meetings are at night, or at 4:00. Use your high school students, use your resources, engage your kids in what's going on. Perfect idea. As far as members of these committees not wanting to be filmed, I don't see that being a problem. We all know we're being recorded. I think people will come dress better, a little more lipstick, do their hair a little bit better, so we look pretty on camera. I'm asking you guys to vote yes.
Jacqueline Perez?
I think it was a wonderful idea and suggestion. Many a times, I wanna listen to those meetings. I have to put a public records request in, and sometimes it takes a while. I have to come in and pick it up, pay for the memory stick, and I have no idea what was going on, because even the minutes aren't put in until the following month, and it will be better for transparency. And I, I believe you have staff there, and a lot of these meetings that participate are in there. And I don't see the cost being that expensive. An important thing was that in January, during the construction advisory committee meeting, there were important things that were said by Mark Mora concerning the tax referendum, and not using our taxes for building schools. I would've came in sooner to speak about that, if I had actually heard. He said, Mr. Mora displayed the construction timeline indicating that new projects...
Pause your time, go ahead, Madam Chair.
I can't, I was just gonna say, and I understand where you're going with it. Can we just keep to, uh, the motion?
What he said, what, what Mark Mora stated in that meeting, nobody would even know here, because it's not recorded. He was, he stated that we're not gonna use our tax dollars to build schools. We're gonna use it for other things. And that was what the whole campaign was about. If this was accessible to everyone, I'm sure you would've had an outpouring of people, like they came during that time last year, when they were against and opposed to taxes, and asking questions as to why. So, you're gonna give the, the, the public, the community, an opportunity to participate from home, or wherever they're at, when these important decisions or comments are being made by your own staff. So, please, vote yes.
Ms. Stillwell, do you wanna speak? Okay.
Sure. Just wanted to say really quickly that, um, just point of clarification. I haven't had any conversations with Mrs. Giovinelli about this. However, we are happy in the communications department to work with Trey's team to figure out ways to make this happen. So, that was all I wanted to say.
The conversation happened when we were at the table, talking about it. She was sitting back over there, and she said that they would have, that, that things have already scheduled, it would be difficult to do it this year. That's the conversation that took place, and it happened here at one of the board meetings.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
My advice is to call for the vote.
Okay, and...
Do you wanna restate the motion?
Please restate it.
Okay. "The motion is to direct the superintendent and board chair to work together to schedule all advisory board meetings to be televised."
Okay, and can I, the motion is out there, so do we just take the vote?
Yes, and I would recommend you do it verbally.
All in favor? Do, do we go one by one?
Do it verbally.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Ms. Fisher?
Ms. Fisher, first.
Aye.
Okay. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye, so it passes 5-2.
Okay.
And, uh, I will follow up with the superintendent on that to, you mentioned about bringing something to our meeting on Tuesday, so, um, if, if we can maybe get together before then, talk about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, I forget where we are now. Did we get everybody's comments?
You were on Ms. Giovinelli's comments, I don't know if she has any more.
And, are you done, Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye, thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Well, thank you.
Jordan?
The only thing I wanted to say, that I thought that Ryan was very courageous to come in here and tell his story.
Yes.
Of what he experienced.
Right.
Very much so. Um, Ms. Vaughn?
No.
And Ms. Morgan?
Well, I think what I would like to suggest is that the teachers who have spoken have an opportunity to go to Tallahassee and talk to the people in Tallahassee. I mean, I, I, I just feel as though there are limits on what we can do. And I just feel like they're talking to us, and, um, they're going to be disappointed because we live within the constraints imposed by the legislature. I think they need to be talking to people, they need to be in Dane Eagle's office, they need to be in Ray Rodriguez's office, they need to be in, in, uh, Fitz and Hagen, in every office, and they need to be in Tallahassee, talking about this. That's, so, those are my comments.
Okay, and Reese?
Um, yes, so first, I'd just like to say thank you for this opportunity to come here. I've been to a few board meetings already, but like, this is a totally different perspective, so you get some insight onto how things actually run. And secondly, I just wanted to make some comments from a student perspective on some of the issues and things that were brought up at the meeting. So, first of all, um, Ms. Gettins, your motion at the beginning of the meeting about like cooperation, I think is a really good example of the school board setting an example of working together. Like, it's been mentioned that our culture and of other government entities might not set the best example of working together to come to solutions, but on a local level, at least, we're giving a good example to our kids, which is a great way to raise good leaders. And secondly, I thought it was really good to see a bunch of people coming out with supports for arts programs. I think it was Einstein that said something to the effect of the fact that you can't measure a fish by their ability to climb a tree, because they would look like a failure. And that's true for academics as well. Like, while we have a lot of kids that are really excelling at reading and math in that, this district, and that's a great thing, supporting arts programs is great, because it allows totally different students to excel at things that had we not support, did we not support the arts programs, we wouldn't even get a chance to see. And it can make school less stressful in general, and actually get kids interested in education. Next, the issue of safety was brought up, which is something that, as a student, is very important. I don't know if after Parkland, the threats have really increased, or if it's just become a lot more visible. And I think the newfound awareness of the problem is a good thing. And as it was mentioned, I think that there is a huge issue with threats. Like, I know at my school, recently, we've had a lot of issues with threats being made. And while we haven't had any actual violent action, which is a really great thing, the psychological effect and the disturbance to the education can be a very big issue. Like, for instance, we had a threat on my school one day, and I walked into my first period, which would usually have around 30 kids, and there were seven kids there. And kids did not come to school, because they were terrified that they were going to get shot, which, a really important thing to combat this issue, would be to make sure that there are consequences for when kids do this, so that we don't have kids calling in fake threats just to get out of a test, or something like that. Lastly, um, we heard a lot of teachers talk, and as a student, that's really heartbreaking, because teachers can be so inspiring, and they can lead students into future careers as teachers and leaders, and all kinds of paths. I have been personally inspired by so many teachers, as I'm sure kids all across our district have. And the thought of having a major, like, a major epidemic of teachers leaving because of pay is really just depressing. And I know that it was mentioned that these teachers leaving, it's a national statistic, but if we do want to be a world-class school system, we can become the national leader for a solution. And as I said earlier, thank you for this opportunity, and I really enjoyed it.
Very good, thank you. Um, I don't know if someone is the, in the control room. I just want that one picture up, if you have it, of the kids around the, this side-up box. But, um, one thing I wanna mention about the teachers, I think before we go or send people to Tallahassee, it's our job to convince and prove to the teachers that we have done all that we can do here. And I think that's the issue with them right now, they don't believe that we have. And I don't know the answer as to how we can prove that to them, but I think it's our job to do so. Um, I did a lot in the last couple of weeks, but I wanna just jump to the, uh, one. I visited ROTC, J-R-O-T-C, at Cypress Lake High School, and it was fabulous. They are, um, an awesome group. And Jen was one of the, I met her at the news press breakfast, and I said, you know, what school are you at? She said Cypress, and she says, "Oh, you have to come and see us sometime," so I did, and it was awesome. I have pictures, but I'll do them later, 'cause I know it's late. But I do wanna show this one, because, um, the project is Read Across America. I have read across Lee County, from one end to the other end, and it has been marvelous. The book that I have read at every school I've gone to is called Henry's Freedom Box. It's a free, it's a real story that happened about a young man that was a slave, that decided he wanted to go to freedom, so he had his friends to ship him to freedom in Philadelphia. And it talks about how they turned the box upside down, even though the box said "this side up," when they threw it around, and part of the time, he was upside down. And I read it to first graders, second, third, fourth graders, and people were saying, "Oh, they're not gonna understand this, they don't understand about slavery." They did. And last week, the first grade class that sent me this picture said, "We wanted to send you this, because on the way back from lunch, we saw a box that said 'this side up.'" And they thought about Henry. Sorry, I knew I was gonna do that. It just shows our kids are really, really into their world, and listening and learning from each other. It was a great experience. I've still got the book, and I got a few more schools I still have to go to. But thank you so much for the opportunity, the schools that invited us, and I will continue to spread Henry's Freedom Box throughout the rest of the county. I believe that's all. I told you that we have our, um, we had a meeting last week with all of, um, the team here, the superintendent, and a representative from FSBA. And I must say that I was, I left there feeling lighter, because you have to let out what is on your mind, what's on your heart, otherwise, people don't know it. And I believe that's one of the things that happened at that meeting. I thank all of my fellow members for participating in that, for listening to me, for me listening to all the rest of you. I think it made a difference, and we will be going to have another meeting, like I said, on transparency, where we will continue to flush out the things that we need to do to be a world-class school board. And with that, uh, no other comments? May I have a motion for this?
After that, I can just...
Oh, sorry, what did I do? Oh, I forgot.
I don't have any comments, but... No, I don't have any comments.
You don't have anything? Okay, so now I can do it?
Well, talk about the next scheduled meetings, read them.
Yes, okay. The next scheduled meeting will be on March four, Thursday, March 14th. Will be a board workshop at 1:00. Also, on Tuesday, the 26th, there will be a board briefing meeting at 3:30, and a regular meeting at 6:00. At this point, no other business to come from this body. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fisher, Ms. Giovinelli, and by verbal vote, Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Giovinelli? Patrica?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
And me. Aye. We are dismissed.